Welcome to the Monday, July 24 meeting of the Eastham Select Board. This meeting will be video recorded and broadcast over local access channel 18 and through the town website at www.eastham-ma.gov. Okay, we'll start with public and select board information. This is for any information and items that are not on our agenda. Do the select board have anything they'd like to bring up?
No.
Okay, and anybody in the public would like to bring anything up? All right, we'll move on. So with administrative matters, the first thing we're going to talk about is the National Seashore Parking Contract and the issues that we're currently having with the seashore.
Do you want to talk about it, or do you want me to?
No, I'll get, I'll say bad words. Well, I guess the concept is that, and Amy and I were discussing it, as I understand it, what is happening is rangers are not allowing Eastham residents with Eastham stickers to go into the main parking area. They're saying that the Eastham sticker doesn't get you into the main parking area.
This is for just Nauset Light.
At Nauset Light, yes. As I've read the contract and other people have read the contract, it says we can go into any parking lot with our Eastham sticker. So that's, and why don't you bring us up to data where we are with Brian?
So I spoke to Brian because I was suggesting that this was a concern of ours. They've also refused a dump sticker. They've also refused the parking placards that we give for people who rent cars that are residents. So Christine worked out those two issues, but basically Brian is saying that he does not agree that Eastham residents are allowed to go in both areas and that he would like to amend the agreement that we have to make that clear. And so I stopped the conversation there because I thought we didn't really have any other place to go at that point before discussion with you.
Well.
And I did go back over the original deed in 1965, and the town of Eastham voted at town meeting twice to give both of the beaches to the seashore park with the only caveat being Eastham residents would always be able to swim, recreate, and park for free.
I am, what I'm concerned about is that, in my opinion, the seashore is not very timely and responsive to issues. I mean, it seems that whenever you discuss something with them, they say they'll look into it, and then lots of times it takes forever if we ever hear back. So my opinion is, I think the park, the contract is very, very clear. And we talked about this, Amy and Jackie and I, at our agenda setting meeting. I would like to give them one week to resolve this to our satisfaction, or I think we need to take this to a lawyer. And I think we need to sue the seashore because they're violating the contract. I would not be willing to amend the contract at this point in time.
We just signed it.
Yeah, so that's what I like to see happen.
Last year, I guess.
I don't know, how about the rest of the board?
What's the length of the contract?
Three years.
Five.
Oh, it's five?
Five, it's five years. So it's till 2027, the current one?
2022 it started, yeah.
Right.
And the contract is very, very, very clear. It says specifically, park in any lot.
I was wondering if, I mean, I'm assuming this is about money and it's about revenues for the seashore with parking?
No, they're saying it's fairness, a fairness issue, right? Isn't that what he, that we shouldn't be able to take spots from tourists that are expecting to go to the beach? Now, well, you go ahead, no, add my two cents after.
Oh, I assumed it was about, I assumed it must be about revenues because we have many people who come here and stay in Eastham who then are also a tourist of some sort, trying to visit the beach.
I mean, probably on some level it is about money, but I mean, a lot of people might have passes anyway that are visiting, you know, it isn't necessarily that they're collecting from all of those people.
I think they're basically saying you have your lot, you don't, you can't park any other one, because we give you, we give you these spots and that's all you get. Amy?
Yeah, so I think this, you know, incidence of people going to that other line really only happened if the Eastham part is full and the other part has spots available, which I think is very rare.
Right. Exactly.
I mean, it rarely, it's usually the other way around.
Yes.
Like, I remember when we first did this, it was, was it '08?
Yeah. Was it that long ago?
Seven or eight? Oh, yes, maybe even '07. That people were complaining to the park, visitors, that there's all those spots open and we're waiting in line.
Which is why that for the past few years, if our spots are open, as of 11/30, we allow their line to go into our spots. It's always been reciprocal, we've always shared. That's what's so difficult about the current situation because it's, we're not able to talk about it and we're not able to use the past practices that have worked pretty well.
Yeah, because I think that is a rare case, when the Eastham one is full and the other one's open. So for some reason, tourists on that day, maybe it's a cloudy day, and the Eastham people don't mind going to the beach on a cloudy day, and so you get more of them.
Yeah.
But, yeah, I think it's, I think it's petty. And to say it's not fair, well, he, we, how long do we work on this contract, Art? Six, eight months?
Yeah, we had a couple of different versions.
Back and forth, back and forth.
And he made changes, he found, he made changes that we didn't even want. He came back with, this is what we want, and we accepted it. So. Looking four years down the, down the pike, we're allowed to park, and the way we read it and what the deed would have is that we're allowed to park any place without having to pay. But we haven't agreed with the separate spots on Nauset Light and behind the Coast Guard House, whatever they're going to rename that, that one there was separate, just Eastham, only Eastham taxpayers can, can use. If we push hard on this, which I, I agree with Art, but if we push hard on this, can they come back in four years and say, well, you just park free and if there's, if Nauset Light's full, it's full, and you gotta go to Little Creek or whatever they're gonna, going to name it, and take away the quote, "dedicated" close quotes, "spots" for Eastham? That's the only, only fear I have as to what the exact power that the Park Service has about potentially eliminating those dedicated spots. That's the, you know, in a, look, they're not being fair, they're being kind of petty, but they could be petty for four years from now if we push hard, and that's the only question I have, and I don't, I don't know the straight answer on that. I've never negotiated with them, as you, you and Amy have, and Jackie surely has.
I think that maybe Amy remembers this better than I do, but my understanding from Sheila was that the genesis of this particular contract came because lots of residents were frustrated that they couldn't park and they would want to drop off, and the seashore did not want people being dropped off. They thought it was unsafe, and we negotiated that for a while, like, can we have an attendant there to help with the drop off? And they said, no, we don't want to allow drop offs, and in exchange for not allowing drop offs, the, the set aside parking thing.
It was combination of that and the ocean beach issue.
Yeah.
That's right.
Well, the ocean, I remember.
And that will come back.
That would, yeah.
It will come back.
Well, I guess my, my question is, I always thought this was a concession to the town because the town agreed to turn over those beaches to the seashore.
That's clear, yes.
So my naive, un-lawyer-like opinion is if they don't want to sign the contract, then we say, fine, get your people out of the beach, it's ours. It's our beaches, we'll take our beaches back. Now, that's probably, I don't know how realistic that is, and it's expensive, but the fact of the matter is, if, if, if we have this based on us letting them take our beaches, then we should take our beaches back.
I think that, what's interesting about the 1965 agreement is it, it specifically says that we can take the beach back if it's no longer being used, they're not using it as a beach and a parking area and a whatever. So I'm not sure we could do that, but I do think we can demand that they follow the terms of the agreement, the original 1965 agreement and the terms of this agreement. This has been a, I guess my thought is that this has been a cooperative, mostly pleasant, collaborative relationship for a lot of years, and we have not.
Fifteen, fifteen years.
Right, so we haven't had real problems. When they've had a problem, we've fixed it. When we've had a problem, they've tried to fix it. So I just, it, it stymies me why we're at the point we're at, because this is unusual. So I would like to make some way to right the ship somehow, because I do not want, I, I wouldn't want to see us give up our rights.
Right, no, no, I agree. No, I only asked, looking at the potential power, the peak coming four years from now of this other one, no, we're not going to agree, agree with it, you know, a contract requires two people to sign. But I, this is a change that, that just shouldn't happen, and I, I think you push back, I think, Art, you're right, we'll do it, and then we, in four years, we have to renegotiate, we. Yeah, we may, we may have to, yeah, we may have to decide, we have to do it.
And it may look completely different down there in four years in that there might be a shuttle up near the high school that ties into the other one, and.
Yeah, you don't, we don't know.
And both lots are, you know, limited down by the beach.
Yes.
So, you know, it's probably going to look different in four years.
So if everybody's in agreement, I would make a motion.
Can I, can I ask a question first?
I'm sorry?
Can I ask a question first?
Sure, absolutely.
So I was wondering if, we already signed this agreement, right?
Yep.
Okay, so I would be in favor of keeping the agreement as written and understanding that the parks might want to change it in that specific area in the future, if they could somehow keep track of how many Eastham residents go to use the other part of the lot?
When it's full.
When the, when the Eastham lot is full, because I think that might be useful information before we go and change the, certainly changing this current agreement, but also thinking forward in four years of, was this as big an issue as potentially the parks thought it might be? Or was it just like an occasional use? I don't particularly want to sue the parks over parking.
It's really not over parking, Suzanne, it's a right to access.
Okay.
We allowed them to take our beaches, we conveyed our beaches, we asked for no value except for free parking and free access. And so I guess I understand your reticence, and I'm not a, you know, I, we've been great with the park, really. They've been excellent neighbors. So I just think we're at a point where we do not want to do anything that would give away the rights that we were granted in 1963 or 1965, whenever the park came into.
I just didn't know if there was another opportunity for you to go back and be like, hey, this, this is what the board said, that they're not interested in amending the contract in that way. They want to keep the contract with the contract as written, and are you prepared to move forward with this as written or not? And I, I guess.
I think that's what the letter's going to say.
Oh, okay, well, he said, he's talked about suing people, and I was like, are we there yet? Is there like another step before that?
I think we're pretty close, Suzanne. He's already told us no once. So I think we're pretty close. We give him, I would say.
Another opportunity.
We give him one more opportunity to resolve this, and we give him a timeframe to resolve it in. Otherwise, it'll fester all summer.
Right.
So, and then I think he understands, he has to understand that if he continues to say we can't do it, then our recourse is one legal.
And if you want to offer a meeting, we can offer a meeting, but I'd suggest that it be not just, you know, Brian and I, that it be you, at least a couple of you.
I, I'm more than willing to meet with him, but if what he's, all he's going to come back and tell us is what he told you, so, so we okay? Make a motion?
Yeah.
I make a motion that we communicate to Brian that we are not interested at this time in renegotiating the contract. That we anticipate that this will be resolved within the next week, once you communicate to him.
Or we request this be resolved in the next week.
Request, okay, that this should be resolved in the next week, and if not, we'll have to consider taking legal action.
Okay. I'll second that.
Any discussion? Okay, we'll vote, Suzanne?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
Amy?
Aye.
And I'm an aye, okay. Next item is the zoning task force charter update.
Charge.
Charge, charter, zoning task force charge update. It says charter.
It's just a couple of letters off, it's so close, though.
What was that on the?
It's on the agenda, it's, it says chapter. Okay, any discussion, questions?
No, looks good.
I think we followed Mary's.
Yeah, didn't we follow the, did we vote on this last time?
No, you just asked me to make the changes that Mary was suggesting.
Okay.
So I did, and now it's before you.
And you did, thank you.
I'll make a motion, we approve the zoning task force charge.
Second it. Any discussion? Okay, we'll vote. Suzanne?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
Amy?
Aye.
And I'm an aye, okay. The scallop truck contract, when we got into discussing, discussing the scallop truck, we recognized that we never had fully executed or officially executed the contract for the scallop truck. And therefore Jackie went ahead, made some changes to that contract, and we'd like now to go ahead and vote on that contract.
You're not with scallop?
Oh, we wondered, I was.
Yeah.
It looks like it added a day.
They requested a Wednesday, Saturday schedule, and that was okay with us at the beginning of this year, and what I've added that wasn't in it is the signage issue, because that's the issue that we've had.
Oh, okay, so it's one to five Wednesdays and Saturdays, and they can only have the sign up the day before and the day of?
Mm-hmm.
And no, the sign nowhere else?
Right, that makes sense, right? Yeah.
Absolutely. Were they there yesterday, though?
I don't think they've been doing Wednesdays, but I don't know.
No, Sunday.
Saturday.
They shouldn't be there on a Sunday.
I know, but I thought I saw, there was a post, I thought, that, anyway.
The attachment says 12 to 5.
Yeah.
But in the body of the contract, you said 1 to 5, is that correct?
It's 12 to 5.
I'm just trying, is it 12 to 5 or 1 to 5?
It's 12 to 5, this year they did 1 to 5 last year.
Okay, so it's 12 to 5, okay.
So change that.
It's, in the attachment, it's right, it's 12 to 5. Okay, any other discussion? Can I get a motion to approve the contract?
I'll make a motion to approve the contract between the town and the scallop truck.
With the amendment.
With the amendment to the date or the time.
Second.
Any discussion? Suzanne?
Oh, yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
Amy?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. The next item is the adult education program at middle school. If you remember, over a year ago, we wrote a letter to superintendent of schools relative to, trying to understand why adult education had been discontinued.
Right.
And we didn't really hear anything back, and we followed up at our budget meeting in the fall. And she said, well, because of the high school renovation, there's no room. And I said, well, it's not held at the high school, it's held at the middle school. Oh, so she was going to look into it, and we still don't have anything back. So what do you think we ought to do relative to?
Do we know who used to run that program?
Yeah, they left, they stopped running it.
Well, no, I know they stopped running it, but like, who the staff person was that organized it?
I don't know, but they retired, and right before COVID, they stopped the program.
Oh, okay, so.
But they, somebody, they ran it, and then they hired teachers.
Yeah, but it sounds like there is no longer a person on staff who.
They weren't even sta, it was a, sort of a separate entity, right? It wasn't a, a school?
Yeah.
And she told us, once we wrote, when we wrote the letter, she said we're going to start it up in the fall.
Last year.
Last year. She said they were going to restart it. So she didn't say, I don't have anybody to do it, she said she was going to restart it. Well, you, you could write another letter and ask for a response, we could, you could ask for a meeting. I'm trying to think.
Ask what, staff member?
Well, I think you, I think you would ask for a meeting with the superintendent. I mean, you've got to go straight, because this is a policy decision coming from the schools, and, and she's got at least some control on, on policy.
The school or the school committee?
Well, and there's, they get money from the state for these kinds of things, too, the adult ed.
I don't think so, no.
A budget?
Really, all the funds paid, and then the fees charged by.
Oh, okay.
That's why they always, they sent out this great little handbook, right?
Yeah.
And it would always be, if we didn't get 10 people, then they wouldn't run the class, or they'd have a certain number for each.
But isn't there, is there something with regional schools that they're supposed to offer these kinds of things? I remember Art, we talked about that.
Technical schools do, technical schools have the requirement that they have to do adult training.
Regionals, maybe not.
The opposite, I think schools probably are limited up to age 23.
Yeah.
Right.
Well, I guess just we could send a letter asking, you know, that we'd love to see it reinstated, and can we, what can we do to help?
Yeah, because it seems, it's a lot to get a lot, it seems, you know.
Well, starting over.
Since the, starting over, the person retired, so the like, maybe whatever system that was in place that had it running smoothly has fallen apart, so. And organizing people to show up for dates and times and that sort of thing doesn't seem like a super easy task.
Okay, I can draft a letter. Right, but I also think that in the back of our minds, we should, if we don't hear back, that it's time.
Yeah, for a meeting.
It's time for a meeting with her, or, or a time to discuss it with the school committee, or particularly Art, the two Eastham representatives to the school committee to, to let it get started.
Well, I think that letter should go to all those people.
With a copy to them as well, yes, yeah.
Right, right. School committee and our, specifically our.
All right, I'll draft the letter. All right, okay. I don't think we need to vote on that, we'll just move on. Okay, the next is the Timothy Smith loan for Emmeline Schnitzer.
Yes, I spoke to Emmeline. I didn't meet her in person, but I did talk to her on the phone, and she's very excited to pursue a degree in physical therapy.
Oh, nice.
She, I think, said she played soccer for years and has had a lot of physical therapy herself, so sort of, you know, as a way to kind of stay with the sport, she can be on the sidelines and, and helping athletes, so she's very excited, and it's not, it's in Franklin, the school, which I didn't realize, it was, it's pretty close, Dean, Dean College. And so, yeah, and I, I did encourage her that, you know, you can apply every year if need be, and I wasn't sure about if, she's also plans to pursue a master's after that. Do we cover masters also?
I think we do stick with kids if they have, but I think there's a maximum, let me check.
Well, that's what I said, I think.
Maximum number of years?
Yeah, four, I thought maybe four years.
Four years in a row.
Because she only has, she went, I think, to four Cs maybe first.
Okay.
Criminal justice. And then she's switching degree, but I don't think she applied for a loan before.
No, yeah, so.
So I thought maybe it was four years, so I told, I encouraged her to continue to apply, and if masters aren't allowed, she'll find out, but.
I don't think we say that, because we allow all kinds of school, not just college.
Okay, okay.
So it's really just the four time.
Yeah. All right, so with that, I'll make a motion to, I guess, give the loan.
Approve the loan?
Approve the loan to Emmeline Schnitzer for, is it 5,000 now?
No, it's still four.
Four. We should probably change that at some point, yeah.
Second.
She seconded, I think. Any discussion? Okay, let's vote, Suzanne?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
Amy?
Aye.
And I'm an aye, okay. The One Cape Summit, I think we talked a little bit before about that. It starts the 1st of August, there is a breakfast at the Wacocet Outer Bar and Grill at 7:30.
Is that the first day or the second day?
It's the first day.
It's the first day.
I can't make that one, so.
And with the welcome and introduction from the Cape and Islands Municipal Leagues Association by Kevin Galligan, Christie Senatori from, Senatori from the Cape Cod Commission, Edward Augustus, the Secretary of Massachusetts Executive Vosses in Housing and Liberal Communities, and a discussion of Cape Cod regional priority issues among Cape Cod Selectmen and Councilors. Okay? So if you'd like to, you can sign up for that. I think the cutoff date for signing up is.
Right, passed.
Passed, yeah.
It's passed.
No, I thought it was the 26th, wasn't it?
They're full.
So is what you listed.
Oh, they're full?
Yeah.
So I had included this as an agenda item because they're making us post, put it in your packet as an agenda, because we have more than one select board member going, thinking of all the towns to post it. But I went to go register Suzanne, it was quite interesting.
Wow.
Okay. Okay. Let's move on to committee appointments. Two appointments for the Climate Action Committee, John Boyne and Olav Heglen is a reappointment. I met with John, and he was one of two candidates, two excellent candidates, and the committee brought forward John's name, we've got the other, he's been involved in a, a subcommittee of the Climate Action Committee, very active, so he would, he's a great plus, and Olav, for reappointment, has been very active on the committee, which is becoming a very active committee, so I think both of them are fine. So that's your motion to approve them? My motion is to appoint John Boyne and to the search, to the search for Climate Action Committee, and reappoint Olav Heglen to the Climate Action Committee.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? So let's vote, Suzanne?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
Amy?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Okay, Board of Health, appointment of Peter Hansing.
Jerry did the interview.
Yes, I, I was the pinch hitter on the, the, the interview. He has a medical, medical degree and, and he's, he's been involved with medical issues, was very much aware of the major focus right now, the Board of Health in large part, policy-wise, is wastewater and dealing with septic systems, et cetera, was anxious to do it. He was not on the town census, he does live in Eastham, wasn't on the town census, however, and was not a voter, and he went up to, right after the meeting, went up to, to register the vote, and that was the air conditioning issue day, so he couldn't vote, he couldn't register that day, but that is why it's pending his voter registration, because he wasn't on the census to try and make sure he is in fact a full-time resident of Eastham, which is required for a regulatory board. So I move that we appoint Peter Hensiger to the Board of Health pending his voter registration.
No, his, his, yeah, but you don't have to be a registered voter to be.
I know you don't, but.
So pending his, his residency, how about, his year-round residency?
I, okay, let me, I'll redo it.
I, okay, let me, I'll redo it. I move that we appoint Peter Hanziger to the Board of Health pending his, providing evidence that he is a permanent resident of Eastham.
Second.
Any discussion? Vote Suzanne?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
Amy?
Aye.
I'm an aye. Okay, appointment of Edmund Caserola as the Community Preservation, to the Community Preservation Committee.
Is this one that we have to appoint or is this one that's come straight up from the rec?
It's notice, it's notice.
This is a notice?
Yep.
Okay. David Hobb to the Taxation Aid Committee, that's also a notice?
Yep.
He is, as chairman of the, or as a member of the Board of Assisters, he is, we are required to be on the Taxation Committee. Cultural Counsel, Brian Lavalley.
I think you appoint him, I don't remember that, that one's a special one.
Okay, I'll make, I'll make a motion, we appoint Brian Lavalley to the Cultural Counsel.
Reappoint, right?
Yes.
Reappoint, excuse me.
Second.
Any discussion? Suzanne?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
Amy?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Okay, last meeting, we talked about Craig Nightengale and the Select Board asked me to go back to the Planning Board and to Dan Kalman and talk to them about moving an alternate into the open position on the board. I did that. They had just moved one alternate up to a full-time member. The only other alternate on the board had only been on the board for a short period of time and they have one opening and no candidates. And Dan felt that it would be inappropriate to elevate that alternate at this point in time, because he didn't have enough experience. So the question is, would we like to reappoint Craig Nightengale for one year and then go back and look after one year to see if it's appropriate to put somebody else in?
That was kind of my feeling, that we give him another year instead of, because he's had three full terms.
He's been on for a long time.
Yeah. But to give him, get one more year for this other person to have more experience maybe and then they could move up from the alternate position.
Can, can we, are we allowed, are we allowed to do that, to appoint for less than, we are, I, I have no problem with that.
So I'll make a motion to appoint Craig Nightengale for a one-year term on the Planning Board.
I'll second.
Okay, any discussion?
So how long has this person been an alternate? I think just a year.
Just, the alternates, the chair has only been an alternate for like a month or two.
A whole month, oh. Oh, okay, all right.
He's new, really new.
He's basically brand new.
Oh, okay, all right, all right, yeah, sure.
Okay. So we have, we have a motion and a second? Any other discussion? Okay, we'll vote. Suzanne?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
Amy?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Okay, Town Managers Report.
One thing that wasn't on the agenda, but it's in here, is to put me back on Affordable Housing Trust.
Oh, yes.
And that's our, that's our appointments.
And unless anyone has a burning desire to do it, I would be happy to do it again.
Okay, so that's one we do have to vote on.
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry. I missed that.
I move we appoint Amy Ekman to the Affordable Housing Trust as a member.
I'll second.
Okay.
Any discussion? Okay, we'll vote. Suzanne?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yeah, I guess so, yes.
Amy?
Aye.
And I'm an aye, okay. All right, goes Town Managers Report.
I don't think I have any, anything new that's not in my written report. Basically though, I would like to encourage people to drive a little bit slower, pay attention to what they're doing on the road. We have a lot of cyclists, we have a lot of pedestrians and we've just had a lot of accidents this year and, you know, it's just, I just want everyone to be cautious and safe, so. You'll actually get there faster if there's not huge traffic backups because of accidents. I learned that today.
I'm thinking of getting a dash cam just to catch some of this. My God. It's pretty frightening how people.
And our side roads are, you know, there's, we still have some narrow side roads and if there's someone walking a dog or cycling, it's, it's hard. You have to slow down and sometimes you have to just stop for a minute, you know.
On that note, did you get a chance to talk to Adam about the speed limits that we discussed?
I did and he, you know, he's, he's open to talking about it with you. I think we should probably schedule something.
Because we talked about maybe on the side streets, doing away with the 35s in a few areas. So we don't have any 35s, everything's below 30 or less.
We only have two rows with 35, right?
Right, Br- Bridge and Bracket. I thought Herringbrook, but actually it's Bridge, it's.
Oh, okay, that makes sense.
It's where they meet, where the Herringbrook comes in at the.
And then Bridge goes to 30 after that, to San Marcel, I think.
Yeah, there's, there's some, there's some 25s on it, it's, it's all, there's quite a range, so, you know, a lower 30 would be good. Because it's windy, there's always people walking.
Always a lot of people.
Yeah, it tells you right before the bike path, you know, caution, slow down, share the road and then it speeds up to 35. I'm like, whoa, and then there's the bike path, it's like, ah!
I think people are getting better with the bike path stopping.
Yes.
Those blinky lights.
The cyclists, I think, are.
Yeah.
Giving people a hard time this summer.
Okay, new and upcoming agenda items or follow-up? Does anybody have anything?
I, maybe I ask this every time, where we might be going with tee time or the tee time committee or the next phase of the master plan.
Do you want to put that on as a discussion?
Um, yes.
You want me to just do an update?
Well, the, I think it was our last meeting, they, they did talk about it a little bit. Yeah, Mary or Paul, it's okay. You did not make it to my to-do list to watch the meeting. They did talk about the form-based code and going out to bid, request for someone.
Which we do have a consultant, so I'm thinking of a fall startup again for, and one of the things I'm working on is a new charge for the tee time committee, because we don't want to call in the tee time committee anymore.
Right, right, okay, all right, I was just, you know.
Yeah, but no, that's definitely on the radar just for September.
Okay, I have something, two or three meetings back that's talked about the EFE recognition, to do a recognition event for EFE.
Oh, yeah, okay, yeah, the flowers.
And they said, when I talked to them, they said, you know, July or August. So I talked to Frank Dobek again. They would like to do a Tuesday in August for a luncheon.
Oh, nice.
Okay, I've talked to Melanie relative to using the library. She said, that's fine, just let me know when. They would like as many select board members as possible to come to the event. It'd probably be about 1 o'clock on a Tuesday. So can you guys tell me which Tuesdays are best for you or if, if those Tuesdays in August are not, so that I can kind of get a poll together and?
Well, not next Tuesday, if you're gonna.
Next Tuesday's out, I agree.
Go to the thing. Let's look at this.
I'm open for all the Tuesdays in the month.
You're at the One Cape on one of the Tuesdays, aren't you?
Yeah.
I, that's next week.
I'm.
And that's the one now.
The 15th, no.
Sadly, I'm off, my daughter moving is from the 15th to the 29th. Those are gone, so only one would be the 8th. Sorry.
Yeah, I could probably do the 8th. I could probably do the 8th.
I don't know if I can get arranged that quick, but I can try.
Well, August is, was ambitious, no matter which date you picked. I can't, definitely can't do the 15th. I could do the 22nd. I could do the 22nd. I'm gonna go out on a limb and say Jamie will be at work.
It's gonna be hard to get Jamie.
Tuesdays. On a, on a board, go out on a long board.
Okay, so I've got Jerry on the 8th, Suzanne on the 8th of the 22nd, Amy on the 8th of the 22nd and I'll check with Jamie.
Yeah.
How about you Jackie?
I'm good, anytime you want me, I'll be there.
Wait, so you said, what did we say, were the maybe?
8th and 22nd.
I'm just gonna tentatively put this in there.
There you go, that's a good idea.
Okay, I'll talk to Jamie and then I'll get back to you and let you know and I'll get back to Frank. Okay? All right. Okay, I need an approval of the minutes of July 10th.
I didn't see the minutes.
We don't have minutes.
Okay, so we're not gonna do that. Any other business or correspondence?
So there've been some people here the whole.
Yes, did you like, like to talk to us?
Well, two weeks ago, you discussed Clayton Road about whether it was.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yes.
Oh, yeah. Right.
Are you the homeowners?
Come on up. I didn't come forward, go ahead. Just give your name and, and address.
I'm David Milliken, Milliken Construction.
I'm Kristin Milliken.
So we thought you were just here to want to watch us, we didn't know you had.
Well, it was entertaining.